Welcome everybody to the work session of Tuesday, January twenty second, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so we just have a couple of quick things on the agenda um this evening before we go into our joint meeting with the planning board. Uh the first is the authorization to establish the capital project um and budget for the twenty nineteen in-house law and cutting um equipment purchase. There were some questions about this last time. Um I know Ivy, you and Rob Dury had a conversation.
Yep.
Um and there was an email that was sent around. Are there any additional questions? You guys are good.
Uh just to Rob's point, are these environmentally friendly?
We will make sure that they're environmentally friendly. This is just permission to actually set up the project. There are things like the trailer and the trunk that is actually like uh significantly tall on so.
So that's fine, it's all cross at present, okay.
Yeah. Yes, we are investigating that. The next is authorization to approve the Medco healthcare rates and MVP health plan rates so that we can take and pay our bills for uh the health insurance.
Are those the rates that to clarify, are those rates of town, the town case? Is there is there contribution tonight or is that?
Yes, yes, and then there's a contribution.
From from employees.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let me go back to what Jeremy raised. So we're setting up the capital account, but can they can they go ahead and do the expenditure without, is there any more approval from us for the actual expenditure? Because when would we mandate, assuming we wanted to, that the uh?
You you wanted to, so we're.
At the point that they spend the money.
Yeah, so we're gonna take and investigate, well, we're investigating um the EPA regulations and where our options are.
Could they have any approval?
Um and we'll come back to the board with it once we figure out what it is. This is just really to get the trailer and the other piece of equipment that we need to get ordered um.
They need. I know what I'm saying, but at some point when, before they purchase it, they need to uh.
Come back to us.
Come back to us.
Yeah, we'll we'll come back to you as far as the uh the back tack rollers go, the trimmers um.
Okay.
I think we have to authorize the expenditure from the capital account.
Yeah, so this is just to set it up so we can take in all of these two things.
Right, okay. Because I mean, by the way, just with the equipment, it it says on the equipment if it's EPA, sorry to interrupt, so that's.
Yeah, but we wanna know what the other options might be for it, right? But I don't know if there are different ones.
We need to know the cost differential. That's all.
Okay. All right.
You make a conscious choice to pay more.
Um yeah, I don't think, it's not the amount of the pricing, it's just the efficiency and everything else, especially when it comes to the electric options, which I'm not sure what question.
Alright, next.
Okay, so um MVP and uh and Medco uh health premium rates. Um and uh payment of claims and unfortunately we left out, I think it's two salaries from the part-time schedule, so we're once again gonna try to get it right and uh have a complete part-time schedule. Slowly but surely, we're gonna take and pay this. Um and the last answer to the work session is the authorization to hire an independent contractor. Uh we actually found a terrifically qualified gal to take and do our minutes for us, so we're very excited over it. Um uh council has advised us that we need to have a um independent contractor um contract with her, she's an independent contractor. And uh so we're very excited to get her on board and get her started.
Why why is that, Council?
Discussions with Labor Council, so I apologize.
Oh, that she's an independent contractor? Because she's gonna be transcribing the minutes from home. She does that, she's going to be basically.
Right. Who was doing that before?
Uh Diane Stevens, and then Christina picked up the slack on that. Unfortunately Diane Stevens got very sick and then died, and Christina's been trying out. Yeah, um we missed her terribly, but anyway, so uh.
And another thing doing something.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so she's, so she's not a part.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, you see her meetings, that's true.
So she's not a part-time employee, she's not gonna be in the nursing division working at Town Hall, she's gonna be doing it.
She's not gonna be entitled to benefits.
No benefits, no, no, no.
No benefits, she's an hourly employee, she will, an hourly worker, she will submit a voucher to us with minutes along the way for the number of hours she spent.
Let's talk, let's talk, let's minutes, let's go.
At some point, are we not, are we making a permit, right, just look around, are we making a law coming with the permit kind of?
Yeah, it's all being transcribed. You pay by the minute, you pay by the word.
Cause I I would actually.
Just being the right minutes like right away, we're.
We're gonna have to do.
Yeah, she's uh, she's an.
Yeah, I I I would really, I second what Lisa just said. I don't think it's a problem for us to have a transcription of the minutes, as much as it is, sorry.
No, 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 we're not interested. Yeah.
That's another dollar, right there.
It's not verbatim.
No, no, it's not verbatim, it's it's somewhere used.
But.
Since the board discussed X, this is a vote, right?
My word, my word.
Yeah, it's the way we we.
But this person is not, but this person is not going to attend the meeting?
No.
It just seems to me that if you're taking meeting minutes, often times a lot easier to do it if you're actually sitting there in the meeting.
Well, we're right now are um, right now Lauren is actually uh doing our minutes, our meeting minutes for us, and she is present. Um we actually are using this new gal to take and uh eliminate the backlog. We've got all twenty eighteen that needs to be addressed. And as soon as she does that, we'll be able to phase her into uh current minutes.
But why is it, is she not local?
She is, but she's a stay-at-home mom, so it's not worth it for her. She can live stream watch them. That's the difference.
Alright, I mean, I think that we should set it up with her though where she is live streaming watching them though, because the, I feel like there's so many conversations where we're talking, we're winning, you know, and it's, you know, if you wanna boil something down to the essence of it, you really kinda have to not just, you know.
I'm I'm gonna defer to her as she's an attorney who has experience doing this, as to whether or not she feels she needs to.
Well, I mean, if we're paying twenty-five dollars an hour, I think we obviously have to look forward more.
Absolutely, and I'm 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 not arguing with you, I'm I'm just telling you that in the past, it has really not been necessary for people to take in actually a ten minutes.
Yeah.
Sometimes it means, sometimes it it makes it a little bit easier for them, depending upon the quality of the people that we're able to get. This person is fantastically qualified and I think she's gonna be able to do it. If it turns out she's not, she'll let us know, we'll be able to tell from the quality of the minutes that we get, and we'll revisit it. We have no long-term commitment to her, nor she to us.
Yeah, she watches it.
Can we also require that there's a certain turnaround on the meeting, so that we um?
There will be one, once she works with current minutes, there will be a two-week term. That's what's required.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Um but I don't know how to really do that with all of twenty eighteen, so it's, you know, I don't know, you know, I'd like to, for her to get started and not work out what was in the meeting, and yeah.
I don't remember what was, what was in it.
Plus if she's, she's not as good at transcribing it, and she's a stay-at-home mom, she's gonna have zero, you know, she's not gonna wanna come to the meeting.
Yeah, and it's not, I I I'm using the word transcription, our mission is, it's just basically creating minutes for us.
She's gonna wanna watch a meter reader.
Anyway, um there is, there are a series of resolutions that we just need to address, out of the things that we just talked about. Um the first is to establish the capital project.
I move establish capital project and reflect it herein with a total bu- uh project budget of a hundred sixty thousand dollars and purchase of equipment to Newcastle Parks Department for in-house lawn cutting. That's getting away from ways islands triangles town, more properties, et cetera, within the town of Newcastle, the project will be funded entirely with future seal by closely. The debt associated with the bond will be paid, part of it be paid entirely by the general fund.
Second.
Well, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh I move to approve the following premium rates as reflected below for the two thousand nineteen UMR Medco health plan, which places three and a half percent increase of the two thousand eighteen rates. These are the uh lowest rate is a bronze plan uh as Affordable Care Act Marketplace mandates. Um and it is reflected below here.
Second.
Well, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um I move to approve the following premium rates with term February first, two thousand nineteen through January thirty first, twenty twenty. MVP healthcare, uh the town HMO provider, uh this is a two thou- two percent increase over two thousand eighteen, again as reflected below.
Second.
Well, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Um I move to approve the payment of claims, amount of four to two thousand forty-three dollars, forty cents, again as reflected here. Uh broken out listed on the summary pre-check write report and detailed voucher details report. All data January twenty second of this year, checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, January twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Well, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Caitlin Crichton to work as an independent contractor for the purpose of minute transcription, although not verbatim. At the rate of twenty-five dollars per hour, to pay paid on a monthly basis upon execution of an independent contractor services agreement.
Second.
Well, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the adopt the part-time employee hourly schedule for the two thousand nineteen year as amended and attached.
Okay.
Well, favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you, baby. Okay, we're gonna adjourn and go into um our joint meeting with the publicity and the planning.
So is that in here?
Second.
Well, favor.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Uh basically, I'm looking at sheet number two, SSE O one, that's basically the plan of Bumper King, the intersection of Center Street. And I'll just go pretty much what Lou did. Everything that Lou's office had done is in red, obviously, and I'm gonna start coming out of Center Street. And what he did here is he winded out the curve that you're of the road geometry, east and west of Center Street. So when you come out of on, from Center Street, you make a right and go up Upper King, you can see where he brought the curb line in. And you see a dimension of eight feet. That eight feet is the dimensional line for the striping. So the reason he did that is he brought the curb line in quite a bit. It's only off about maybe four or five feet from the old curb geometry by the Newcastle Historical Society. The reason for that striping is he wanted to make certain that you have enough turning movement for the bus, for the fire truck.
Oh, that's a good reason.
Because I gave the fire truck a cut sheet uh from the fire marshal to Lou's office, and they can do a customized template, which he overlaid on this, which he shows on other sheets, I'll get to in a minute. And it makes the full turn, keeping everything inside that lane without going in the lane coming down the hill. So there's a reason for that striping.
There's a good reason for that.
There used to be spots there, right?
That is correct. Well, yes, there were spots, but they weren't, I don't think, in the best designed location.
Yes, yes. A lot of people use those spots.
Why why do we, why do we still have that little like quote before the, that tumor, if you will, um by the Historical Society in Center Street?
They did.
Um they're trying to uh cut down the the size of the crosswalk, because kids are using it back and forth, you know, we have a lot of pedestrian traffic there.
Gotcha, it's just such a weird, it's just so weird.
I I know, but you know what, it's sort of delaying these.
But I guess if you're gaining back, but you're gaining back some space with the yellow stripes or car pulling out to the right.
Right, and also there are two spots here.
Yeah, there's two spots, so whenever there's a spot, you try to channelize the car so they don't, you did that.
Right, we'll have so.
They don't take.
And there'll be Lou's striping there.
Well, that was, that was one of the comments Jill and I had, we told Lou to bring that in even a little bit closer to open up the mouth.
Yeah, we we actually want it a little bit wider. It sort of protrudes a little bit too much there. We we would like it a little bit more round.
Yeah.
He's gonna bring that in, he told Lou, look at that, which he's gonna do once we get it, we'll.
Bring it a little more.
Yeah.
Take it a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh as you can tell, the old lane configuration's up on Upper King, coming down into town at twelve and twelve and eight. Now what Lou had done, he winded them out quite a bit, as you can see, there used to be twelve feet coming all the way down, twelve, twelve, eight and eight, he winded them out to fifteen and fifteen.
What's in Mount Kisco, is it forty total? I'm in Street.
Uh next, when I saw Mount Kisco, it was pretty much twelve and twelve.
Twelve.
So we're gaining six feet over that, but eight feet is standard, is the eight feet is the standard for the car. That's right.
Yes. To open up the whole. You know.
The difference also, the difference in Mount K, I mean, I was the one who also brought up Mount Kisco, but right it straight. The problem here is that it's a bend.
It's right.
Keep in mind.
No, it's good, it's an extra three foot side.
I know, I know, right, right, I'm saying.
Keep in mind, you got an eight percent grade coming down this hill, so plus you have curvature.
I I'm all for it.
So windens it out, makes it a little bit safer.
Yeah, a hundred percent, I'm a, I think it should be.
So if I'm looking at this correctly, you are now putting a crosshatching here again, is that for returning radius?
Well, let me start from Center Street making a left now. If you noticed, on the south side of King Street, there's small hatching there, and people are asking, well, why is that first spot back so far? The reason for that is, when a car is approaching a stop la- stop bar on Center, they have to look left and right, and that parking space, if you put one more in there, they say, oh, let's get four.
You gotta go in with the traffic.
It's gonna inhibit, it's gonna inhibit the sight lines for safety.
But we have four now, so you just.
Yeah, probably shouldn't.
Secondly speaking, that fourth one probably obstructed the sight distance.
Is there any way to get four in there?
Well, I wrote back to Lou, Jill and I looked at it, and we told him, look, try to get something back, but I had a funny feeling when he's gonna get those four spots in, he's probably gonna have to reduce again the roadway width coming on down, and he'd probably not going to have the fifteen feet, I suspect. I've been getting that check unless we do.
So that's.
I think that fifteen feet is important.
I think it is.
Having the cord, you don't wanna look so narrow, we're just from a, you lose a spot, or also if we go forward with it other plant, eventually we're gaining spots.
And that was the biggest issue.
Well, then you gain spots on the other side of the street, when we just marked them out, that we we picked up quite a few spots.
Now, what I did.
You will hear complaints, I mean, listen, I'm not.
No matter what, we'll hear complaints.
We just, no, I know, but you will hear complaints from the s- pro- store owners that are right there with a loss of one spot.
Now, what I did was I went through.
Not, maybe okay, just think.
I went through his whole iteration, started on this sheet and the next sheet, and I did the net gain, net loss, counting up all the spots. Now, if you're gonna have two-way traffic, if the town board decides that, and you have perpendicular parking, you pick up quite a few more spots along Allen Place. So when you add those in as a net and a net, even though you're gonna lose some along Lower King, I come up with a plus four King and parking spots.
Bob, why do you, why are we able to do straight parking on um?
Allen.
On Allen, when it's a two-way street where we can't do it now? Like, why do we have angle parking now? Let me, let me ask you another way. Let's assume we keep Lower King one way, can we still make those spots on Allen Place?
Perpendicular.
Perpendicular, the the ninety.
Perpendicular.
Yes.
And you'd probably need to park on both sides of the street.
Yes.
We already have parking on both sides of the street, but they're angled for some reason.
Yeah.
If you're gonna keep Allen Place one way going south around from Lower King.
Allen is the one that runs parallel to the train tracks.
Yeah, with the train tracks right here.
Oh, oh, the train tracks, I thought you were talking about Lower King.
Lower King.
Yes, we can.
I was thinking if we keep Lower King one way.
Robert, yes, you can. If you do, only keep one way going south, you set a twenty-three foot wide roadway, uh more than enough for one way, which is like sixteen. Uh you could change those into uh perpendicular, yes. Just food for thought for the board.
Right.
I don't understand what's the problem with the answer just doing that, we're not following you.
That's.
You make up more spots.
Well, if you, if you're gonna pick up more spots, for instance, on a.
I think the traffic flow coming out of the train station, the congestion at Woodburn would be greatly alleviated.
Sorry, so what's the best, what's the best, what's the best on Upper King Street making the parking spots instead of angle, making?
But let me, let me answer, let me answer, let me answer first.
No, 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 not Lower King, Allen Place.
No.
No, on Allen Place, Ivy.
Oh, okay.
Parallel to the train, to the track.
For instance, if you look at the spots that Lou had come up with on the.
Did did you get the drawing yet?
No, no, I didn't, I'm sorry. I'll I'll be quiet.
No, 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 I'm gonna take a picture and just send it to you, in the way.
By the way.
That's what you wanted to do in the first place.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do in the first place.
Some of those spots, Bob, are handicap spots. Does that make a difference with the angle versus perpendicular?
I'm I'm with you.
Uh you know, are some of the spots alone.
Shouldn't.
They are def- some of them are definitely uh handicap, cause they're always open, and they're always wanting.
Well, yeah, then you would lose some of these, and the ADA requirements for handicap spot, Bob, are eight foot wide for the access lane, and eight foot for the lane, so you would lose some spots.
Handicapped here.
I think there are a few.
It's slowed down, yeah. Should.
Pretty sure they are.
Because right now, if you do those.
Is there a mistake, who I guess?
I don't think they are, because.
On the train side.
Yeah, they are.
There is, it's definitely, it's like, forgive them.
On the train, on the train side, yeah.
Well, where are they near?
Well, I don't.
Stores.
Not on that side, they're not.
But right now, assuming they're all regular, I just did a calculation, guys, on the, on the west side, on Allen Place, Bob, you got twenty-five new, if they're perpendicular, and the old angle are seventeen, so that's an eight King.
These are the stores.
These are hand, these are handicapped over here.
That's plus eight right there. So assuming some of those are ADA.
You're still probably gonna be positive.
Still gonna be positive.
I mean, we should probably move, if they're ADA, we should really move them here, closer to the stores.
On the s- on the uh east side.
I don't know, wherever this is, look.
Right, east, east.
Yeah, they would have to cross the sidewalk and run to the other side.
Yeah, no, I wasn't even thinking here, I was thinking here.
Parallels everywhere.
Like here.
A long low king.
Oh, you mean in the parking lot in here?
Yeah, because then it gives you proximity to all these stores.
If you can put some in here, you probably put some in here too. I was thinking on the east side.
Yeah.
Bob, you meant, I see here's twenty-three feet two, twenty-three feet two inches at its widest. Is that sufficient from twenty-two and a half to twenty-three feet, or twenty-three to two, is that sufficient for one lane each way?
Yes, you can have, I wouldn't go any less than the forty-two feet for two-way traffic and a parking spot.
And would you?
Okay, not parking spot.
In a parking lot.
Would you, you can limit maybe truck traffic two-way, so that that would be as wide, is that what you'd wanna do to protect?
You can do that, it's up to the town board to do, but twenty-two, twenty-two for parking lot in two-way, I don't, it's fine, it's fine.
It's eleven feet each side.
He's not supposed to go in that first.
Ideally, I like that twenty-four. The range is twenty-two to twenty-four. And he has twenty-three, twenty-three two.
It's twenty-three, twenty-two and a half, twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-two five. Yeah, I, that's fine. I have no problem with that, and that's acceptable too as well. Um let me get back, I guess, to the alignment that he was gonna get up on the first sheet. So when you make your left, uh what he did was, coming out of Center, you're making a left going down Upper King towards the King Street. South Greeley, North Greeley intersection, he comes down to a minimum fourteen-three, fourteen-two. Again, which I recommend, and also not only that, if you note, on the first sheet, he has a fourteen-three dimension, he has like a two-foot shoulder.
You can't even hear them.
Which is even, makes it that much more accommodating to traffic. That's would be on the north side, see a two-foot dimension he has on the north side, by the cleaners.
Yes, I see it.
Mm-hmm. So what Lou had done is he has a white striped line, it's a five line, which is fourteen feet up to the stop line. Comes back fourteen-three, and then you have a two-foot there just for even more safety and more maneuverability. And the same thing coming up the hill, when you make a right, I mean, north on King, on North Greeley and coming up Upper King, you see the small amount of striping he has in front of Family Bridges. He has a fourteen-two, again, that's channelized the traffic, and a veer the car away from the parked car.
He's still close, but close. It's not, no, no, it's it's not, that's, this is what's here now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, everything in red is what we designed, everything in gray tones.
No, no, I was saying, why we still have a turn lane there?
Oh, no, that's all coming out.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all coming out.
I am still confused, I'm going back to Jeremy's tumor.
Yeah.
For those people at home.
We gotta come up with a better name.
That that bump out should be rounded. What we suggested is that it be rounded here, instead of coming out here like this.
You brought a bump out.
It will, it's, something just looks.
Ivy, I don't have a tumor.
Unnatural, because there is no sidewalk on this side. So the sidewalk goes here and it's going to the firehouse, I mean, it's just, so you're saying you're gonna shave some of this? Because this is already, even if you just shaved it to meet that.
Well, you know, quite honestly, the problem we we have there, uh if you note, right by it says, where it says radius equals fifteen feet on the east side.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
There's two structures. Now, you, when you're doing this, you gotta have the curb line bisect those two structures. You can't have a granite.
Structures of what?
What are they?
Drainage.
More drainage, it's sanitary.
Oh, wow.
So we can't, we we can't move those, so these, these limited by that.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Got it.
That's why you gotta split the difference, and you can't have a granite curb go right over a structure manhole, you just can't do it, it's just poor design.
That's a very good reason.
So that's why we have to cut it, and Jill picked up on this right away, and we we got back to Lou, and quite honestly, if he comes in maybe two, three feet on the east, coming in on Center from the Center, and then split the difference between the two manholes, I think it might make it look a little bit better.
Yeah. Yeah.
From an aesthetic standpoint.
Yeah.
As well, and plus open up the throat of Center Street.
Okay. Yeah. Exactly, okay.
So we we directed them to do that, Jill and I, so once we get that into the plan, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, okay.
I like this so far, it looks superficial.
No, we we think you did a really nice job, and and we're really pleased.
And also, he's very good. Also, what he did was, he did a turn-in analysis using a WB forty, which is a tractor trailer, which is the biggest, one of the biggest tractor trailers you can use. He also used the Newcastle Fire Truck on sheet number four, and he also used the uh single unit truck that just had the FedEx truck. And looking at all the movements from my review of these things, it looks to me, it keeps everything in the lanes that they're trying to stay into.
Oh, that's what I'm interested in, okay.
The only conflict I see, if anyone notes, when a truck is either coming in or coming out of going down Lower King, it skirts the stop line a little bit.
Which one are you looking at?
When you're making, trucks making a left down Lower King, uh.
Number four.
Four or five.
On four, you can see the one making a left from North Greeley, South Greeley going down Lower King, that's gonna scoot over.
Down here, comes out here a little bit.
The stop bar. Likewise, when it's coming down South North Greeley, making a right on Lower King, it's gonna scoot the stop bar.
And what about when it gets to the bottom of Lower King, where he drew this hatched area, and it's gonna make a left? Is that enough room there?
Yeah, and then according to what he showed.
He's showing here, so she's, so if you look here, you can see how how this is their movements.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking there. Okay, and why did we do that hatched area there? Like, we could probably buy a little more space there, can't we?
Um that's like the very, like the city area, sort of, but stand there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I don't think it's good.
Um, I don't know.
Because it's not um, has the hatched area is like, is like sidewalk, it's like the city, you have to give it another city.
Yeah, a little city, yeah, it's like a little sidewalk right there.
Yeah, it just looks like this was built out, this hatched area bit.
Are you talking about on the north side, east side?
The train side.
On the west side.
Yeah, I mean, he can probably, all honesty, maybe split the difference if you wanna open up the sidewalk area. Is that your point?
They're not gonna do parking anyway.
No, I just, it just feels very narrow to me to come down, and especially even if you're in this first spot to try to get out, it just feels, that hatched area feels like a little large.
People will end up parking on, on breast, you know, rodent.
So forgive me, if this was something that you guys already discussed, and I just wasn't able to follow the conversation earlier, but now that I have this picture in front of me, I assume that this conversation about whether or not we're making Lower King a two-way street is a longer conversation, but if we do decide to go with that,
Yes.
Um it seems to me that Lou needs to extend this drawing to also cover the Allen Street parking lot. So if that then becomes, that would also be two-way, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, Ivy, it's sheet number two, so it's actually the first sheet I sent you. I put it in an odd order, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, you have.
So can we finish answering my question before we get to Ivy's question?
All right, what is your question?
So this here, it seems, this is this hash.
To narrow it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, she feels it's very, you feel it's too narrow.
I feel like it's a little narrow, especially let's, even if you're in here, to try to get out and kinda.
Yeah, she feels this is very tight, it's very tight right there.
In other words, don't take that, eliminate that one spot, or push back that city.
No, I don't see, leave that spot, or push back the hatching a little bit.
Push back the city, yes. You can do that.
I mean, it's only paint, so.
It's only paint, that's all it really is. He, I was think, I was figuring Lou was probably doing that to channelize the left, the movement at the end of Lower King.
Right, yeah. That was true. And then just sort of, yeah.
So the, so the people don't think they have, go up to the curb, he said, if they go up to the curb and continue straight, they're gonna hit the car there.
Right.
So he's doing that to channelize the flow of traffic to avoid the parked cars.
Alright. Okay, as long as we're striking it.
That's his logic.
It's only paint, so we can always move it.
You can always modify that.
Okay, okay.
So that's the reason he puts it in.
Yeah. Ivy, do you see the page?
Yeah, I do, but that, so my my issue is by going, extending back from through the Allen Street parking lot to underneath the bridge, to the, a line in the middle of the road there?
Yeah.
If that's the drawing, I didn't get that one.
No, he's, it's not drawn, but we discussed that.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have that. All we have is the parking lot behind Chapala Village Market.
Right.
And the parking on the other side of the street that would be facing Conifer. We have not gone under the bridge or any of that stuff, we don't have that video.
But.
So this is, right, so this is.
So I guess my, my point is just that I feel that Lou's analysis about whether, about how to make Lower King two ways, um then means that you have to extend that analysis all the way through to the train station, because you're really much out.
Right, but it is two ways.
It is, it is two ways.
It is two-way up until you get to the parking.
Yeah.
It stops, it stops over there.
No, I understand that the parking lot area itself is not two-way right now.
Right.
Well, it it is up until the second.
So what Bob, what Bob said, let me jump in, what Bob said, what Bob, Ivy, Ivy, what Bob said, and we can ask Lou to look at it,
It's not way in there.
is it's between twenty-two and a half feet to twenty-three and a half feet, or twenty-three uh feet two inches, which would be technically sufficient for a lane each way. So we'll have Lou make that determination just to confirm that.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, we have to consider the fact that that becomes a major hurdle there, as folks are getting off of the train and coming off.
No doubt.
Yeah, we still have to talk about that. We, this is really talking about picking up spots, which we could frankly do anyway, even if it's one way or two.
Right, right.
But we still need to talk about whether we wanna make it two-way or not.
Yeah.
Right, and and I have to tell you that that this was just to align the road, so we gave ourselves an option going forward.
So in other words, this is before we do construction on that part of the.
And, right, and and.
Of the project, so if if that's the case, then we should definitely take into consider, we should, Ivy's correct, we should extend the analysis to include the full, like, loop course. Yeah, of course, we just haven't had that conversation with it. And. And and when, and when, since I know the construction plans are closed, nothing's gonna be done, but when does this decision need to be made in terms of implementing the streetscape?
It, so this is paint.
Is all of this paint, even a couple of this. Coming back, all of this stuff, all of this paint, all of this paint with these additional spots, or is that change in construction blocks?
No, 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 so down here, so Lower King.
Right there.
Talking about this page right here.
It's, it's bound by Starbucks, so it has no change, which I don't think, I don't think it's, it's not changing, no.
Yes. Yes, this is. No, it's not changed.
No, I'm talking in front of family bridges and all of the.
It was already meant to come in.
It's not about the geometry up on Center Street.
Yeah, no, no, no. This is, right, this is not paint, but down here is, so this decision.
Oh, you're back, yeah, that's.
But I'm specifically talking about the geometry of Sen- Center Street.
Oh, Center Street, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, this is what you guys have to decide on, so so this is Lou's first proposal. We asked him to go back and take a look at the four spots, the possibility of being able to include another spot in front of Family Bridges, since we just put it in.
Yes.
Um and to see what that would do to the geometry. Once the board decides on either the the three or the four spot that we hope is coming, we would then go to DOT and.
Have to go to DOT, they have to approve it, even though it's more of a formality, because we're gonna be editing it out.
So how long you think they'll take?
I. It's anyone's guess, but I'm gonna steal it, Dan, Dan Lewis, and let her know the urgency behind it, I've been dealing with her directly.
Right.
They're pretty good with the revisions we have.
Yeah, they really work. And then there's also, and then there's um, we have to talk to Con Ed, because there is a telephone pole that is just really in the middle of the street, it needs to be moved out to the curb line.
Yes, so what we need to make decision on.
But Con Ed won't move it until we set the curb line. So um, but, so these are the decisions that the board has to make regarding this right now. As far as the rest of it goes, Lou really did not change any of the uh curb lines that WSP set on.
No, pretty much he's used the same curb line, same width coming all the way down.
We just wanted a confirmation that the, all those radii were in fact accurate, that it would work.
All right, now, just in terms of looking at sort of that, you know, six-thirty PM going through Woodburn.
Yep.
How this would sort of change the traffic flow, whether it's better or worse, are we going to be getting an analysis?
Yeah, we'll ask Lou to do it.
Make no mistake, I'll be better, have no, make no.
Oh, I agree, but I mean, we should have somebody looking at.
Well, we, we should have somebody look at it, and.
As a community.
There are issues other places then, so we wanna hear that.
Oh, yeah, we should have a traffic.
Yeah.
A hundred percent, make no, yes, that's the question, it's really the issue, yeah.
We should have a tra- we should have the traffic council, we know what percentage is gonna be using that exit.
Absolutely.
We should have a traffic, we should have a traffic answering, know what percentage is gonna be using that exit versus Woodbine, it's definitely make Woodbine better, we know that. The question is, it could overwhelm the Greeley, the Greeley uh King Street.
Overwhelming over there. Well, the thing is, we got a traffic light, so in theory during rush hour, we can change the timing of the traffic light to relieve that traffic, so.
It would be a smart way too, and it would learn where the tra- when the traffic is.
So my feeling is, is that, you know, if the streetscape, and I understand we have a little extra time on the streetscape. But I'm assuming that a lot of this work is gonna be done in the good weather, that as people are kind of getting used to the changes, the streetscape's gonna be. It would actually be kind of good for the final plan in place.
Yeah, that.
And not go back after having spent all this money and.
No, this really, the the problem, the the issue on it's gonna be that we're not.
Think we're gonna use the new entrance.
The installation of the traffic light is going to be one of the last things, and so the construction on Lower King is gonna be finished.
I'll stay with the old one.
So we're not gonna be able to do any two-way traffic there until this.
No, I understand, we will be able to do it, but I think that if we go and do all this construction and all of a sudden we say, oh, let's go ahead and this, and we like, three months later go in and start repainting, it's.
Oh, I know, no, no, I got it.
Kinda like, what, couldn't think about this, give me a break.
No, no, I got, I got it, I'm with you, okay.
I did send Lou all the traffic, uh the white paper that we sent up to DOT.
Great.
So he has all the numbers, he says he's gonna look at that for the traffic timing, he said that might have to be readjusted a little bit, and he wants to see how it's gonna work to make that two-way traffic down there as well.
Yeah.
And I think, I think something we should, we don't need to talk about now, but I just wanna throw it out there, something we should consider is maybe limiting, if we have only, what is this, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spots on Lower King. Consider making them like fifteen-minute parking or something, something like that, where it's basically just, well, it serves a different purpose.
Yeah.
It serves a different purpose.
Or like build longer than that.
Yeah, but half an hour parking, where it's for, based for people to come, you get more of a turnover.
I mean, I don't, I don't, unfortunately, the reality is that people have to.
Or or why don't we go back to money, just make those premium spots in charge of, you know, like they do another, like the tunnel they have.
Not a special I need to be involved in.
A lot of the church, but the bottom line is, no matter what we do, the people have.
So um so we're still in fact, hopefully get a final to you by the end of January. So we're gonna push to Lou, cuz he's unfortunately been otherwise engaged, but um we're gonna push Lou to see if we can get the alternate here.
Okay.
Um so that we can make a decision, and then we will submit to all the parties that need to see it.
All right, we have one, one last issue.
Right.
Phyllis, did you wanna talk to us about, you had an issue with the garbage?
Our garbage?
Now be your time.
Okay, I have this garbage issue. I think that you should establish a procedure of some sort of punishment if they don't collect your garbage.
Okay, but.
We're having problems, um.
Or have you been calling Santa Pro when they miss?
We don't show up.
I think I agree with you, we've been having a few days, I think, because of the weather with, oh, that's right, there's been a couple of days where we have, I'm on a Friday pickup. That the garbage has not been picked up until Saturday, not even first thing Saturday morning, so on and so forth. But the real issue is, did you know that there was a change in how we have to pack, put our garbage out for pickup?
I just can't, I I just don't understand what they're doing or not doing.
They're just, they're not coming at all?
They, they sort of sail around my corner.
Did you?
I don't know if they're picking up on some of the street.
Are you separating your bottles and your uh paper?
Yeah. Everything's separated, my garbage, I'll show you what I do. I mean, I live, I'm the only one in the house usually. I put this thing in a plastic bag, and I had about four of these in the garbage pail.
Well, do you know what, can I tell you?
One a day.
It'll take them.
And they just sail right by. And I think you should have a system of finding them.
Right, so what I can tell you is, the way they're picking up the garbage, because they're thinking that what you're putting out is recycling.
Well, you don't know that.
No, it's in a paper bag.
I have, they took my recycling.
But I think what, they're confused as to what it is, so what I would suggest, even though it's a little more inconvenient.
They're not confused, that's in a garbage pail.
I've had three weeks where my garbage is not.
If it's, oh, you don't know if it's in a garbage pail, she's saying.
It's in the garbage pail.
Phyllis, let me just say one thing.
Doesn't matter, if the same thing, they threw my recycling bag out for three weeks, I've been on a battle of like, who everything in it was black.
You gotta call them.
I get.
It's just not sanitary.
Phyllis, I'm, before we leave, I'm gonna give you my cell phone number. And because I get people email me all the time and say they forgot my garbage, then what happens is, I contact Santa Pro, they get back to me within seconds. They sh- sometimes they show me a GPS map that shows exactly when they were there picking it up, and other times they say.
I put mine out the night before, so.
Okay, listen, no, let me finish, please, that sometimes, other times they say we didn't get to the person yet. But in your case, what I can have them do, because they're very, very responsive, they really are, what I can have them do is actually stop at your house and speak to you, if you want. Because maybe there is an issue with the garbage, we can have them stop at your house and actually speak to you and find out if there is an issue.
Well, the recycling man came first the other day, and I spoke to him, and he says, well, they're coming up the street, they're coming in ten minutes. So I'm just get, I'm fed up, I mean, I can't put my garbage into town's receptacles at some corner, I'm not gonna do that.
Okay, so tomorrow, let's deal with it.
No, no, he did.
And it's one thing with it, when it, when it's the leaves and stuff, they didn't always do that, but I can throw them in the woods. Cuz I have, you know, I have big woods behind my house, but I've lived here for an awful, the fifty something, fifty, over fifty years, and I've never remembered this bad.
All right, so tomorrow, I'll reach out to you, and then we'll contact Santa Pro together, and they will, we will figure out what's going on, okay?
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please drive safely going home, okay?
What?
Please drive safely going home.
Oh, I drive, always drive safely.
Okay.
Rob, are you gonna provide everyone at home with your phone number too? All our listeners, watchers?
Otherwise, you can simply call Santa Pro when they're really good down there.
No, 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 Rob, hold on.
They have to be very responsive, they really are.
And I even tipped all of them.
Maybe they didn't get it, maybe someone else took it, and that's why.
No, I gave them, that was before all this started.
All right.
Thank you so much for your patience, everybody. I make a motion, Peter.
Thank you.
Second.
Well, favor.
All right.
Thanks, Ivy.